Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
I see the vice chairman Gaffney is not here. Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Here.
Member Esteho.
Here.
I don't see member Impamba and member Larue.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll continue on with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic.
To the very public for which states.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice.
We still have to remember our unity, but you know, at least our pride is here. So that's a good thing. The town of Burlington will be holding the June 3 meeting. The planning board is a virtual electronic meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the governor issued an executive order in March 12, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under general law 30A, section 20.
Do you want to jump in, Les? You're on mute.
This meeting is being held via Cisco Webex and is accessible as follows. If you go to townofberlinet.com, the meeting code is 1739794263. The meeting password is 1645 and you're also welcome to join us by phone at 617-315-0704. This meeting is being broadcast on the Bcat government channel, which can be found on Comcast 99, RCA 15, and Verizon 41, and streamed on Facebook Live via the Bcat Facebook page. The public will, as always, be able to make comments during the hearing during the time for public comment. Questions can be asked via Webex, the Webex chat function, Facebook Live, by calling the planning office at 781-270-1645, and by email at planning@berlinet.org during the meeting. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves first. If you have any questions regarding participation during this meeting, please call planning staff at 781-270-1645 or email us at planning@berlinet.org.
Do you want to do the continuances?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item 7BB out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney, not here. And member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Impamba, not here yet. Member Larue.
Yes.
Item 7BB is a public hearing, application for approval of an amendment to a definitive subdivision planned 4 and 5 Redmond Street. Mari Hills Incorporated is the applicant.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of June 17, 2021, as requested in an email by the applicant dated June 2, 2021.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Larue.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items 7CC out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Larue.
Yes.
7CC is a continued public hearing to amend the zoning bylaw, Article 5 and Article 7, as they pretend to floor area ratio. Planning board is the applicant. So.
Madam Chair, I make a motion.
I just wasn't sure if you guys, this is Kristen, I wasn't sure if you guys, this was an item for which we put off of this last May town meeting needing a lot more, just some more research and some analysis before we move forward. At this point, there's two options. If you guys still want to think about it, you can continue, but we are not prepared to bring this forward in September. If you want to withdraw it at this time, and we can certainly re-advertise if it comes up as a planning board priority after we have our planning board priority session.
Thanks, Kristen. So just to kind of piggyback off of that, where we aren't prepared, later on in the meeting, I think we're going to discuss a point in time where the planning board can discuss kind of strategy and what we hope to accomplish over the next year. I think this might be a point of interest to discuss at that point in time. So as Kristen said, we can either withdraw or continue the matter to the next planning board meeting. May I have a motion, please?
You could also continue it out to July. We're not, we're not prepared to talk about it at the next meeting if you do choose to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we withdraw this application and bring it forward another time in the future.
Thank you.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino. Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Larue.
Yes.
And yes for me.
I'm sorry, didn't see you hop on, Joe.
Yeah, alright.
Awesome.
Alright.
Thank you, folks. Next is citizens' time. Anyone wishing to ask a question shall identify themselves prior to that question. Anyone, please raise your hand or speak at this moment. Staff, do we have anyone on Facebook or chat?
Madam Chair, this is Brady. I don't see anyone in the chat or with their hand raised.
Great. Thank you, Brady. Let's move on to announcements, please.
Good morning. So, Madam Chair, this is Liz. The ZDRC Science Subcommittee is going to meet June 7 at 5:30 via Zoom. The Sculpture Park Subcommittee is going to be on June 8 at 9:00 a.m. Zoning Bylaw Review Committee is on June 9 at 6:30. The town, our amazing town clerk Amy Warfield is hosting a document shredding day for everybody in town on June 9 at 6:30, oh no, on June 12 at 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It's the town hall that has a shredding truck. And you know, you can't bring a dump truck of things to shred, but you know, if you can carry it, you can shred it. So that's kind of the parameters. June 14, town hall reopens to the public during normal business hours. Juneteenth will be observed. On June 18, all town offices will be closed that day. And then just kind of upcoming with them starting to open up, we've been hearing from our town administrator Paul Sager. We know that there's going to be a hybrid meeting training with the Burlington ID IT Department upcoming in June so that we can kind of work out how to host hybrid meetings for people that want to participate remotely. So that is what I have, Madam Chair. I don't know if anybody else has anything they want to add.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make another announcement on behalf of the Burlington Sculpture Park Committee. As many of you are probably aware, the Burlington Sculpture Park Committee has contracted with an artist to build three stone art benches in the park area. He started last week, and we just want people to know that he is going to be working there over the next week to two weeks. I will be posting his schedule when it becomes available, and people are invited to come and observe as long as they stay behind the marked barrier for safety reasons. It's pretty exciting and interesting, and it's a great thing to bring kids to. I'm hoping, trying to reach out to some Boy Scout, Girl Scout troops because there's a lot of math and physics involved. I think it's a great learning opportunity, so I want to encourage everyone to come and watch and ask questions and bring your kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we do not have any legal notices. We do not have any non-approvals or administrative matters, so we'll move on to matters of appointment. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items 7A through 7E together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Impamba.
Yes.
Member Larue.
Yes.
7A is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 12.1.5 PD special permit of the Burlington zoning bylaws, 30 North Ave. Glaukos is the applicant. Item B is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.5.1 light manufacturing or processing plants of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 30 North Avenue. Glaukos is, 30 North Avenue Glaukos is the applicant. Item C is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.5.2 laboratories engaged in research, experimental, and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of biology, chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, medicine, and physics, subject to the planning board making the findings set forth in section 8.3.7.4 of the zoning bylaws and subject to the applicable rules and regulations of the Board of Health of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 30 North Avenue. Glaukos is the applicant. Item D is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.5.4 hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 30 North Avenue. Glaukos is the applicant. Item E is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.5.5 generation of storage or hazardous generation or storage of hazardous waste limited to the volumes classified as very small quantity generator of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 30 North Avenue. Glaukos is the applicant. Brady, do we have any new comments for any departmental reports?
Madam Chair, this is Brady. We only have the Board of Health, which was approved this application at their previous meeting. We have five conditions. I can certainly read those into the record if you'd like me to, but they're fairly standard from what we see.
I think we can both pass them if they're standard. Thank you. Kristen, did you want to comment before we speak with the applicant?
Sure. This is the second time that they've been here. They gave an extensive presentation at the last meeting. They are moving into the whole building. The only conditions that I think I mentioned at the last meeting, which I want to reiterate, is just standard conditions that you'll see in most areas where they're going into the building is just to make sure the parking lot stripes, you can see the parking spaces, dumpsters enclosed, and just posting of handicap spaces. Otherwise, we are all set. The Board of Health has moved, has approved them, and we would recommend that you move forward, and we have a decision drafted for you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Kristen. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board for the record. Christine Hung, attorney at Reimer Bronstein, and attorney for the applicant Glaukos Corporation. As Kristen mentioned, we were here at your last board meeting giving a detailed presentation about the applicant Glaukos and walked the board through the floor plan and also you know, discussed their operations. You know, they're very excited to relocate to Burlington and establish their East Coast office here in Burlington. I know you have a full agenda tonight, so I don't want to clog it up, but we're back again and happy to answer any further questions that the board has, and hopefully we'll get a favorable ruling tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions that they'd like to ask? Or comments that they'd like to make? Okay. May I have a motion, please?
You should just ask.
I'm sorry. This is a public hearing. Is anyone in the public would like to speak on this matter? Brady?
Madam Chair, this is Brady. I'm not seeing any hands raised or any comments in the chat.
Great. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing in these matters.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Impamba.
Yes.
Member Larue.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Glaukos Corporation for a special permit pursuant to section 12.1.5 PD special permit of the Burlington zoning bylaw and sections 1.5.1 light manufacturing plants or processing plants, 1.5.2 laboratories engaged in research, experimental, and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of biology, chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, medicine, and physics, subject to the planning board making the findings set forth in section 8.3.7.4 of the zoning bylaws and subject to the applicable rules and regulations of the Board of Health, 1.5.4 hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge, and 1.5.5 generation or storage of hazardous waste limited to the volumes classified as very small quantity generator of the Northwest Park Plan Development District bylaw provisions to allow for the operation of an ophthalmic, medical, technology, and pharmaceutical company located within the Northwest Park Plan Development District and Water Resource District at 30 North Avenue, contained in exhibit A attached.
Thank you.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Impamba.
Yes.
Member Larue.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Members of the board, take care.
Thanks you too.
Good night. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items 7F through 7J together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney is not here. Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Impamba.
Yes. My brother Ray.
Yes.
Item M is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 12.1.5 PD special permit of the zoning bylaw, 1 North Avenue. Desktop Medical Inc. is the applicant. Item J is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.5.1 light manufacturing or processing plants in the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 1 North Avenue. Desktop Medical is the applicant. Desktop Metal is Metal, excuse me, is the applicant. Item H is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.5.2 laboratories engaged in research, experimental, and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of biology, chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, medicine, and physics, subject to the planning board making the findings set forth in section 8.3.7.4 of the zoning bylaws and subject to the applicable rules and regulations of the Board of Health of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 1 North Avenue. Desktop Medical Inc. is the applicant. Item I is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.5.4 hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 1 North Avenue. Desktop Medical Inc. is the applicant. Item J is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.5.5 generation or storage of hazardous waste limited to the volumes classified as a very small quantity generator of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 1 North Avenue. Desktop Medical Inc. is the applicant. Brady, do we have any new comments from last meeting or new reports?
The only new comments that we have, Madam Chair, are six comments from the Board of Health, as they also approved this application at their previous meeting. All they were waiting on from the applicant and what we were waiting to move on was the building and fire code review analysis that was done. And I can certainly read those comments if you'd like to.
I think we're okay. Are there standard comments? Anything out of the ordinary?
No, they're standard.
Right. Who is here representing the applicant?
Madam Chair, I am Holly Lynch, the Environmental Health and Safety Manager for Forest, which is the company that's going to be running in that department, in that facility.
Thank you. Kristen, would you like to comment?
So it has been a month and a half or so since you guys have heard from them. There are 3D, a 3D wood kind of wood powder printing company. They're adding to a robust cluster of additive manufacturing and 3D printing, so also a new addition under the Desktop Metal umbrella. So I don't know if you just want a couple sentences to remember kind of what can, who they are, what they do, but otherwise, as Brady mentioned, we're just waiting for them to satisfy a couple other departments prior to moving forward. But we have a decision drafted, and we're comfortable moving forward.
Great. Is anyone on the board, did they have any questions or comments they would like to make? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment or ask a question?
Madam Chair, this is Brady. I'm not seeing any hands raised or any comments in the chat.
Great.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter, these matters.
Chairman Rappaport.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Impamba.
Yes.
Member Larue.
Yes. Hold on. Sorry.
We have a motion.
Uh.
Bobby, you're doing a good job reading.
Laura, no.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Desktop Metals Inc. for a special permit pursuant to section 12.1.5 PD special permit of the Burlington zoning bylaws. 5.1 light manufacturing plants or processing plants. 1.5.2 laboratories engaged in research, experiment, and testing activities, including but not limited to fields of biology, chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, medicine, and physics, subject to the planning board making findings set forth in section 8.3.7.4 of the zoning bylaws and subject to the applicable rules and regulations of the Board of Health. For hazardous and toxic materials, chemicals, storage, use, transport, disposal, or discharge, and 1.5.5 generation or storage of hazardous waste limited to the volumes classified as a very small quantity generator of the Northwest Park Plan Development District bylaw provisions to allow for the operation of a 3D wood floor plant, floor printing, manufacturing, and research and development facility by the name of Desktop Metals Inc. for a property located in the Northwest Park Plan Development District and the Water Resource District located at 1 North Avenue Suite D, contained in exhibit B attached.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Impamba.
Yes.
Member Larue.
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much, Holly. Have a great evening. Thank you all very much.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items 7K through 7M together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Impamba.
Yes.
Member Larue.
Yes.
Thank you. Item K is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.2.7.5 wholesale trade of the zoning bylaw, 103 Terrace Hall Avenue. General Stone and Tile is the applicant. Item L is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.3.2.12 warehousing incidental to a permitted principal use except hazardous and toxic materials and chemicals of the zoning bylaw, 103 Terrace Hall Avenue. General Stone and Tile is the applicant. Item M is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.3.2.14 incidental sale at retail. Same merchandise sold wholesale, the zoning bylaw, 103 Terrace Hall Avenue. General Stone and Tile is the applicant. Brady, do we have any new reports or comments that you could share with us?
We do not have any new staff reports or comments, department, departmental reports or comments, Madam Chair.
Great. Kristen, would you like to comment?
Sure. One of the questions that came up at the last meeting was the landscaping in and around the site. Mr. Smithhurst, sorry if I mispronounced your name, sent us some photos of the site that were included in your meeting preview earlier this week. We also, Brady has those if any of you want to take a look at them. They are, it does look a lot better upfront, I think, than it did previously, but if, anyway, that was kind of a point of discussion at the last meeting. We have those photos. Brady can put them up if you'd like to see them. I will say I did Google the Malden location. Anyway, I totally agree. It was the greenest patch around, 160 there. So, but anyway, otherwise, we don't have any concerns, and we have a decision drafted, so.
Thank you, Kristen. Welcome back, Mr. Smithhurst. Is there anyone on the board that has a question or comment or would like to see the pictures?
I would like to see the pictures.
Okay. Brady, if you could share those with us, please.
Is everyone able to see those, Madam Chair?
I'm able to see them, yes.
So that's, that's the before. And this is the after photo, so one. You can see the castle is also removed. So, and I believe at the last meeting, the applicant would, if, you know, if there were a few more plantings you're looking for, would work with the property owner to add those.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, am I asked a question?
Of course.
And I'm not sure if this is a question for the applicant or for staff. One thing that concerns me about that whole area is that so many of the businesses have these very wide curb cuts. They're almost not even curb cuts. They just sort of go out into the street, and it's very difficult to see where the street ends and where the parking lot begins. And I'm wondering if there's something we can do, even if it's just curbing, to make that a more defined entrance. And this would be something I'd want to do every time someone comes before us in that stretch of road, which I'm thrilled that the that the sidewalk went in. I think it looks wonderful, and I think it's so much safer than it was before, but I still think that those very wide curb cuts that we have all along that stretch of road is not ideal.
Kristen, is that something that, you know, that we would? How would we handle something like that?
Um, yeah. Brady, could you bring up an aerial of this site? So some of this parking is head in that you were looking at in front of the general site, which is some of the issues we have along this corridor because it's, these sites are, you know, somewhat underparked, and then they have some head in. So this is, okay, so this is kind of weird. This is the, oh, all right. So this curb cut can, so here between the hydrant and like where the arrow is, like, could you have kind of an island come out to make that, let's say, make like a triangle to reduce that length of curb cut? You know, I think potentially we could, and we could condition it such that we could evaluate it with the applicant to, the applicant and the property owner to formalize the curb cut, but not impede, you know, circulation in and around the site.
Right, and I'm not looking for anything extravagant. Just like you said, I want to formalize, this is the entrance, and have the rest of it have a definition between parking lot and street.
Yeah, we can put, we can put a condition in to work with the property owner and the applicant. Just, I just need to figure out where. Let's see, because the drive that's to the right, I'm not sure, that goes to that, I think, the area in the back. The problem with this A and B street kind of area is that the property lines and the buildings and the sites are not exactly where they The problem with this A and B street kind of area is that the property lines and the buildings and the sites are not exactly where they, they should be on the ground as they are on paper, so. Um, that's been a little bit of the, the tricky, tricky part, but I agree with you. I mean, all, a lot of these buildings were old buildings with a lot of trucking activity when they were built back in the 60s. Um, so you had these, you know, enormously wide radius curb cuts because you had, you know, more of a tractor trailer activity, so I, now you don't have that as much, so I think we can certainly work with the property owners to do it along the corridor and. Um, you know, th- this particular property owner owns a couple of the buildings along here, so, um, I think it's a good start.
Okay, thank you. I would appreciate that.
Do any other, um, any other members of the board have a question or comment they'd like to make?
I just want to note that in the motion, the first line, it's redundant, so maybe it says, uh, special permit pursuant to, pursuant to, and it sounds like somebody repeated themselves.
Well, um, let's open this up to the public first to see if any public, um, any members in the public have any comments or questions that they'd like to make, and then we'll, uh, we'll pursue and pursue it. Is there anyone out there that would like to speak?
Madam Chair, this is Brady. I'm not seeing anyone.
Great.
Madam Chair.
Motion to close the public hearing. Oh, sorry.
No, please go ahead.
I like how eager everyone is. This is great.
So I'll second it. Thank you.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Impama.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of General Stone and Tile for a special permit pursuant to motion, uh, sections 4.2.7.5 wholesale trade. 4.3.2.12 warehousing incidental to a permitted principal use. And 4.3.2.14 incidental sale at retail of the town of Burlington zoning bylaws. Permit the operation of a wholesale wall and floor tile retail business by the name of General Stone, Stone and Tile. On property located within the General Industrial IG and Aquifer A districts at 103 Terrace Hall Ave. And contained in Exhibit C as attached and amended.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Impama.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Smithhurst. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I think we're missing some permits here.
Here are number N, Bennetts.
Oh, excuse me. Uh, N is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.2.6.9. Fast order food establishments of the zoning bylaw 75 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington Mall, Bennett Store Burlington, Mass. LLC is the applicant. Uh, who is here representing the applicant?
Um, good evening, Madam Chair. For the record, Christine Hung, attorney at Reimer Bronstein, um, and also attorney for the applicant, Bennett Sandwich Shop. Um, with me tonight, I have Matt Markey, who is a partner and CEO of Bennetts. We're here before you tonight seeking a special permit for a fast order food establishment. Um, Bennetts is excited to be opening up their newest location at the Burlington Mall. They are a fast casual restaurant offering, um, high quality sandwiches and salads. They're not a franchise as there are only three other locations in the Back Bay, Portsmouth, New Hampshire. And they are, uh, just about to open up, um, a location in County Bunkport, Maine, and the Burlington Mall will be their fourth location. They're going to be occupying space within a portion of the former Sears building, and so thank you, Brady, for bringing up this site plan. So just to orient you to the site, to the, um, left, to the west, is Burlington Mall Road. And at the bottom is, uh, Middlesex Turnpike, and Bennetts, you'll see the red arrow will be kind of right in the middle of, of that, that, you know, facade. That's will, where they will be. So they, there will be, um, indoor and outdoor seating, patio seating, seasonal seating. Um, and we have received comments from the Board of Health, and we have no issues with them. They will be installing an external grease trap and an internal grease trap, um, as well. Um, right now, I'd like to turn it over to Matt, who will walk you through the floor plan. And then after that, we will, um, answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you. Matt, do you want to walk the board through the floor plan?
Absolutely, Christine. Thank you very much. Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time today. Super excited to get into Burlington. Um, we've traveled there a bunch through our Boston Fenway location for a lot of catering opportunities. And, uh, couldn't be more excited to help out the business areas and, and, uh, be a great addition to a wonderful community. For our floor plan, um, if we wanted to start towards, uh, the bottom of the page, that's just our outdoor area seating. Um, that's just going to all be tables and, uh, chairs and a little trash area as well. If you go, there, there's going to be two entrances, one on the exterior and one actually on the interior. The, uh, left middle door there, um, is actually the inside of the mall. There's an entryway on that side as well. Um, to bring you in, so we have two different, uh, entry points. Um, from the front, in the bottom left, uh. The 5B, the 5B notes, um, that's all dining area in the, in the bottom left there. Um, to the right of that, we have our cash register area, open air cooler, and then we do a very large amount of takeout, um, business. So we have designated areas for, um, our online order pickups as well as our delivery, uh, pickups through Uber Eats, Grubhub, DoorDash, all of those different companies. Um, once you get past the register, uh, more towards the middle of our plan, the 19 to 2021, all of that is like our colds unit where we prepare our cold sandwiches. And, um, wrap, wrap them as well. You can see next to each other, we have, um, the unit to make the sandwiches and then a wrapping station. Everywhere we make our sandwiches, we have wrapping stations nearby. So that is our colds area near the register. And then along the right, um, and then in the middle, uh, in the right there is going to be our grilling area. Um, where we have, uh, two flat top grills, um, back to back. And on both sides of those units are also storage for all of our meats, vegetables, anything we need to prepare for our grill. Um, and then directly on the wall behind, um, on the right grill, and then in the middle behind the left grill are, again, uh, wrapping stations for all of our food. So easy access to be able to, for us to make our food and, and then get it wrapped up and out. And that's most of our kitchen area. And then all the way in the back is our walk-in cooler, as well as our coffin and standing freezers to hold all of our prepped and, uh, pre-prepped meats and vegetables. Um, and then we also have our, uh, office space for, uh, 42. Um, is our office space. It'll be a small space just, uh, to keep, uh, our documents, all that stuff, nothing too crazy. Um, and then in our back left, uh, on the, uh, on the page here is our food prep area. Um, it would be 45, 50, 51. All this in the back left is our, uh, food prep area, food cleaning area. And then a little bit below that is going to be our storage area and our, uh, some more cleaning area. Um, I can go into more detail on the numbers there. Um, if there's anything specific you were looking for in our layout, um, but that, that should be most of the layout for you.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Kristen, would you like to comment on this?
Um, I actually have a couple additional questions for the applicant. Um, so how large is the space overall?
How large? Um.
Roughly.
Roughly 1,200 to 1,400 square feet.
And then, so, and then how many seats inside and outside?
Uh, it's going to be around 20 seats inside and the same outside.
Okay, and then for, in terms of percentage, I just curiosity in terms of, um, it's interesting seeing the, these new setups now. It's like, you know, you're, the total setup of taking like the area for pickup, but it's not even just pickup for, um, you know, people walking in, but also the Uber Eats and the Grubhubs and et cetera. Um, but also do you do a big catering arm as well out of here?
We would plan on, yeah, actually, so this will be our, uh, we're learning, we're practicing. It's a small business owned by me, my brother-in-law, my sister, and, uh. Each expansion, we've, we've been able to improve on our layouts, uh, our execution, everything, and, uh. Uh, takeout's been about 50% of ours, uh, of our business, uh, definitely through COVID. Um, but it was, it was definitely going to be a little bit less than that pre-COVID, um, but COVID's kind of pushed, uh, pushed us into a stronger takeout demographic. And, um, we've noticed in our current stores, uh, the need for, uh, specific areas and large enough areas to, you know, have traffic move freely and, and, uh, take care of everybody.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I think it's great that the mall is doing a lot more with more local, um, local groups like you guys, um, and, and not having as many national chains, so we're really happy to have you guys, um, here in town. Um, otherwise, I, I don't really have, um, any other comments for the board. As the board, um, recalls, um, under the COVID and virtual policy that we won't close anything in one evening.
Yeah.
Um, so we will, um, we'll have this be, this will be continued into the next meeting, so if there's anything that the board wants to either discuss or for them to bring to the next meeting, I just, please let them know. Otherwise, we're good at this point. Thanks.
Thank you, Kristen.
Um, I do have a couple of questions, but I will, um, hand it over to my board first, uh, before I ask. Is there anyone else that has a question or comment that they'd like to make?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick question about the, um, the outdoor seating. I have two questions. The first one is, uh, what's the barrier going to be between the, uh, the tables out there and the, the rest of the outside? I can't really see it on the plan.
Yeah, it's a, it's a railing.
And yeah, I think, I think there'll be planters. If you scroll down to the next slide, you'll see, oh, will you see the, I don't know if you'll see the outside, but it'll be, oh, you don't see the outside, but there'll be like planters and, and railings, did you say?
Yeah, yeah, on the floor plan, we do have railings. Um, I believe the external area will be controlled by Simon. Um, so whatever they have in store for us, I know, um, they're taking care of, uh, the, the walkway and everything, but, uh, we do have, uh, a railing planned.
Okay, thank you. My other question was, I see some of your other locations are, are doing breakfast. Is it part of the plan to do morning hours too out of this location?
Absolutely. We'll even have, um, an extended breakfast, uh, menu, um, for when we, we do open up there. Um, just a few more breakfast options. It's, uh, been very popular here in our Fenway, Boston location and, uh, excited to bring it to Burlington.
All right, so I had, thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So anyone else?
Uh, Madam Chair, this is Ernie. I did have a question, and, and it's for Kristen. I believe when we did the overall, uh, permit for the mall, there was, uh. Some obligations for the mall to take care of before they were, this is in the, uh, the old Sears building, correct?
Yes.
Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, Kristen, weren't there some obligations for the mall to, uh, to fulfill before there was anything done in the old Sears building, and if so, have they done that yet?
Um, so yes, there are obligations and timelines and things fixed to those. Um, if you recall, the sidewalk along Burlington Mall Road was the major item that had a timeline attached. Um, it was, I think. Was, I can't remember if it was the.
I think you're right.
CEO for the first, um, area in the Sears redevelopment it needed to be completed by, um, but as you all are aware, it is completed, so, um, that particular condition, um, was one of the major that had a timeline and linkage to it. Um, the other, I don't recall, I'm sure there's a couple others that, um, obviously CEO requirements, but that was the big one that I think you're thinking of.
Right, the sidewalk was the major one I was thinking of, and, and thank you. That's, that's been done for a long time, and thank you to Simon also for moving quickly on that. Thanks.
Thank you. So anyone else that has a question or comment they'd like to make? Okay, um, I just had a, a, a quick question. As far as, you know, where you have a decent amount of takeout and pickup, um, what will you be doing for parking as Simon offering dedicated spaces for that, and if so, how many?
Uh, that's a great question. I don't think we have a final answer on that. We are working with them on getting a few dedicated spaces so we, um, it can help with our takeout. I, and I believe, uh, for any walk-in customer, they can use any parking spot, but as far as like a quick pickup delivery, um, we are in communication with them to grab a, a few spots.
Okay.
Oh, you know what, Matt? I actually, you know, there's not going to be any dedicated spots to Bennetts. It'll just be like 15-minute generic parking spots that will just be for any of the restaurants along that area, but there's not going to be any dedicated spot to Bennetts.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, um, and curious, are you going to be serving liquor there as well?
No, ma'am. No liquor.
Okay, um, I don't have any other questions. Um, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone out in the public audience that would like to make a comment or question, uh, has a question for the applicant?
You ready to continue?
Uh, yep, we just need to close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue this matter of the planning board meeting of June 17th, 2021.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Impama.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Great. Okay. Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to take a mo, make a motion to take items 7O through 7V together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Oh, hi, hi, Bill. Um, member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Yes.
Member Impama.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Hey, uh, item O is a continued public hearing, applicant for approval of a special permit pursuant to 12.1.5 PD's special permit of the zoning bylaw provisions 25 Network Drive, the Norblu Company is the applicant. Item P is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.5.1 light manufacturing and processing plants of the Northwest Park PDD by law provisions 25 Network Drive, the Norblu Company is the applicant. And Q is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.5.2 laboratories engage in research, experimental and testing activities, including but not limited to. The fields of biology, chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, geology, medicine, and physics, subject to the planning board making the findings set forth in section 8.3.7.4 of the zoning bylaws. And subject to the applicable rules and regulations of the Board of Health of the Northwest Park PDD by law provisions 25 Network Drive. Um, and the Norblu Company is the applicant. Item R is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.5.3 wholesale trade warehousing of the Northwest Park PDD by law provisions 25 Network Drive, the Norblu Company is the applicant. Item S is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.6.7. Discharges from man-made structures into the wetlands of the Northwest Park PDD by law provisions 25 Network Drive, the Norblu Company is the applicant. Item T is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.7.5 accessory health club located entirely within a commercial residential facility of the Northwest Park PDD by law provisions. 25 Network Drive is the applicant, uh, so, excuse me, 25. twenty-five Network Drive is the applicant, uh, so, excuse me, twenty-five Network Drive, the Norblum Company is the applicant. Item U is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to one point seven point nineteen, storage of oils and fuels, petroleum products, including storage for onsite heating purposes and landscaping maintenance equipment in excess of fifty gallons of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions twenty-five Network Drive, the Norblum Company is the applicant. Item V is for discussion purposes, application for approval of a minor engineering change fifteen thirty-five forty-five ninety-five Network Drive, Norblum Company is the applicant.
Um, who is here representing the applicant today?
Good evening, Madam Chair, for the record, Robert Buckley, Reuben Bronstein. I have with me this evening Todd Fremont Smith from the Norblum Company and some other consultants that we'll introduce as as required. Uh, as you recall, at the last meeting, we walked the board and the audience through uh, the state-of-the-art uh, uh, life science GMP facility that has been the the plans that you're that are before you is the culmination of many months of intense planning, uh, Norblum. And the development team is very excited about this proposal because it is really a state-of-the-art building that um, is uh, being proposed and uh, hopefully will be uh, well-received by the marketplace, um, there's already been some serious discussions with prospective tenants. But I think tonight what we'd like to do, oh, in the interim, we've been to the Board of Health and received their unanimous approval, uh, with respect to the uh, their oversight of of the uh, the process on the life science. But tonight, what we would like to do is, uh, I'll turn it over to Todd and recognizing your clogged agenda, um, and he can introduce some consultants that will try to give the flavor to the board of how sophisticated this building will be and the amount of planning and design that's gone into it, and um, we're, as I said, very excited to deliver this to the marketplace, so Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Buckley.
Uh, thanks, Bob, Madam Chair and Board, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great, I'll just, I I know there are a lot of things going on tonight, so I'll try to, I'll try to go, let me start at the beginning. So again, this is, this is twenty-five Network Drive, um, we, this is the unbuilt site up at the former Sun Micro Campus. Um, the team, as as Bob said, we we've really thoughtful about trying to position this opportunity to the market, the life sciences market continues to expand. Seems like every day we hear about a new tenant that's looking at Burlington or coming to the city. Um, and so as the, you know, as the office market is continues to figure out what it's doing, it's great to know that this life science market is 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 really exploding and and in the suburbs, and all the work that Kristen and the board's team have done to, you know, you know, get that platinum designation and frankly, to switch over to MWRA and really to work with the power companies, make sure we have enough electricity, is all coming at a perfect time to to meet the market demand. Um, uh, so again, just the site, we had formerly been marketing an office building for ten years, nothing's happening. Um, is twenty-five Network Drive, we are a a a science building which is designed specifically to to meet the requirements of hybrid lab, uh, uh, GMP or biomanufacturing tenants that are coming out to the suburb at this point, uh, it's a multi-story building of not more than two hundred and seventy thousand feet. Um, and we're working with Spagnola Geismus, the architecture firm in Boston, to really create a a science building that resonates with scientists and their investor, very often uh, these companies are bringing, you know, in investment funds, funds out to out to the out to Burlington, out to the facility to see, uh, to see what's going on before they invest, and so um, it's important for them to maintain a certain uh, 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 design aesthetic. Um, I did, there were some questions at the last hearing, you guys get sick of listening to me, uh, about what's really going on in this building, uh, what what are those gas those gas storage tanks in the back, why do they, why do they need backup generators? And Richmond is our partner on this, they're gonna actually be the general contractor uh, and they and they lead the design of this facility, these are very technical facilities. Um, even though the Bruins are playing, Russell Glenn, uh, who's a senior from Richmond, has joined us tonight. And I thought we'd just let him talk a little bit about what goes into these buildings and why they're special, or why they need to be designed a certain way. As Bob said, we we must be doing something right, because I think we've got half the building leased already, and the phone is still ringing. Uh, so we're very excited to bring this type of tenant to Burlington, obviously Millipore is another of scale life science installation which really moves the meter, but this building is is, this is a big building and it's it's gonna it's gonna really move the market, I think, in terms of putting Burlington squarely on the life science radar. So I'll stop talking, and maybe Russ, if you would be so kind as to um, just give your thoughts on what you're seeing in the market and what this building represents, and why it, why it's being designed the way it's and then we could have questions.
Uh, thank you, Todd, Madam Chairman Russell Glenn with the Richmond Group. Um, we've been through uh, quite a few of these types of projects, Richmond has been around since nineteen ninety-three doing nothing but bio, uh, biotech and life sciences projects, we've worked with uh, Bob Buckley and his team on a variety of jobs in Lexington, Cambridge, Waltham, Bedford, all the one twenty-eight, two-three area, um, are very experienced in this type of work, and we're thrilled to be part of the Norblum's team um, to work on it, um, the the building at hand here, the 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 whole campus, as Todd mentioned, is an office campus. Uh, lately, we've been doing a lot of consulting work and construction work to convert office buildings to laboratory uh, and or GMP manufacturing use, um, and the the key, key elements of these types of buildings is their robust infrastructure and uh, dimensional uh, characteristics, really, the uh, you know, and R and D labs, as you're probably aware, are essentially just like a business use, except there's a lab component along with the office component, um, and the lab component uh, usually requires a a much more robust HVAC infrastructure, uh, primarily once-through-air as opposed to typical recirculating air, that type of thing. Uh, so these buildings uh, tend to have uh, a little bit more equipment on the rooftop, they have rooftop um, structure to support the air handlers, exhaust fans, things like that, no doubt you've seen the exhaust stacks and such at uh, various facilities as you drive around uh, Lexington and uh, Bedford and Cambridge, et cetera. Uh, as far as GMP and manufacturing, uh, those facilities often require, um, again, the structure is a taller floor-to-floor height, and that really is to accommodate all the mechanical distribution and shafts, et cetera, for those buildings, um, and typically GMP manufacturer, they're making a drug or a biological or perhaps a medical device. Uh, and in many cases, they're, they're looking to to provide clean rooms, and they're looking to protect their products and their raw materials and their finished products. Um, they have designated loading facilities, things like that. Um, but that's really so that they can control their products and the quality of the materials that they receive, it all has to be documented, it's all part of their regulatory approval process. Um, but typically, it's the human that is the uh, the germ, and they want to protect their products from um, that and also protect their employees with locker rooms, changing facilities, airlocks, et cetera. Um, and the buildings themselves, um, like I said, I touched on the mechanical um, and electrical infrastructure, um, they require so many air changes and once-through-air to keep these facilities at the uh, quality, air quality levels that they're required to uh, for their manufacturing processes or even R and D. Uh, so that just takes a lot of mechanical equipment, and it takes a lot of height above the ceiling. We often joke that the, most of the cost of the work is above the ceiling, when the project's all done, it's all really hidden, um, the um, and the electrical loads that support all this equipment are often fairly robust, um, and get natural gas as well, um, and there are other elements of the lab and GMP use such as uh, uh, lab waste treatment, things like that, all very common, we do it all the time, there's just a pH neutralization system that's installed uh, before things are released to sanitary, um, and in addition to that, some of the GMP tenants that uh, Norblum is considering for this building, there are redundancy requirements, so if they have a particular process that might last a day or maybe two days, they want their fans and their power to be backed up, so they'll have generators and such to ensure that they've spent a lot of money on these facilities and their products and their materials to keep those runs or batches going, uh, so they don't lose um, their R and D expenses. Um, and um, sometimes there are sensitive equipment in the buildings, uh, very often we see labs in pretty typical office buildings, but we end up reinforcing the floors and things for sensitive analytical equipment, mass specs, things like that, that are very common in the QCQA uh, functions of these facilities, and they don't need any vibe, extra vibration or anything like that. Um, so we will stiffen up the structure, so that's why you see a little bit taller floor-to-floor heights, uh, you'll see big penthouses full of equipment. Um, those are all items that are attractive to these tenants because they can provide all the robust systems they need. Um, then they typically have a little bit more requirement for loading docks or service elevators. Uh, really not freight elevators per se, more just larger service elevators so they can move their fume hoods and things in and out, um, loading, they really don't uh, have a lot of shipping receiving per se, like they're moving product out, it's more uh, raw materials coming in, uh, most of the products and things that get shipped out are pretty small, and uh, but they do like uh, to protect against vermin or insects, things like that, so the loading talks are sometimes dedicated. Um, so these are all kind of elements that distinguish the R and D type buildings from a typical office building. And uh, we're fully, well, very well experienced in all these things, and we're we're looking forward to uh, delivering an excellent quality product for uh, Norblum and for Burlington.
Uh, Madam Chairman, and one other point, uh, uh, first of all, Russell is uh, is modest, on any major uh, life science or GMP facility, uh, the Richmond Group is usually at the table, uh, they have tremendous experience. But I want to also comment on one issue that was brought up at the last meeting, which was the minor engineering changes. While we were going through this process, it was determined that while we dedicated a lot of resources and time to the design and uh, coordination of the building, uh, we wanted to make sure that the building as 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 designed, uh, integrated well with the existing campus uh, which required some modifications on adjacent lots for pedestrian vehicular uh, sense of arrival and and circulation, and to allow the employees here access to the amenities that are in the uh, was, is it still called, but we've forgotten, Todd?
It is.
Um, uh, so that uh, that that is the purpose for the minor engineering changes, rather rather than doing them sequentially, we felt that it was best to do it all at once for two reasons, one, um, it forced us to focus on those issues, and two, um, in the marketplace, when the prospective tenants look at this, um, one of the the major resources or or raw materials is their their talent, and their talent will be attracted to a campus that is integrated and vibrant, so time was spent on that, so we felt that it was a plan to just come forward all at once and and try to do as much as possible.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Buck, thank you, Mr. Buckley, I appreciate the fact that you're you're focusing on the kind of the
Can I ask, um, the Richmond group, can you talk a little bit about the importance of this type of building and the lab GMP combination? And how unique that building is to the area, the region, like, you know, that, and how kind of important it is to that, the life science cluster in general?
Uh, yes, we're seeing a tremendous demand for the GMP space. Um, many of our clients are, we're looking at typical R and D type spaces and are now trying to implement the uh, ability to accommodate GMP tenants, and GMP is good manufacturing practice. Um, whether it's at a R and D pilot level or actual truly validated approved FDA process or manufacturing, uh, we did a big one in uh, at The Post in Waltham. Um, we've done, those types of projects were originally office uh, assets, and they were converted to attract this type of tenancy, um, so uh, it, we're seeing a big demand for it, and uh, as as a result of that, I'm sure it's quite important to the biotech community. Um, in other cases where you have a typical R and D client, you may just want to offer the ability for some GMP or manufacturing component in their in their program. Uh, so there might be a wing or a section of the building that's that's uh, able to accommodate that. Um, and that enables flexibility and and just provides a better tenant offering. That addresses your your comment.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, just to add, again, if if this were just a biomani- biom manufacturing facility of two hundred thousand feet, it probably would, I don't know, it's more likely to be located at Fort Evans or Raleigh, North Carolina. The the what we're building here is known in the market as a hybrid building, so it's headquarters, office, laboratory space, and GMP space, all under one roof, and in fact, the tenant that we have at the table would be relocating their headquarters to Burlington, it wouldn't just be a biom manufacturing facility, it would be the 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 actual headquarters of this publicly traded company. Uh, we're hoping to do two of those in this building.
Did um, either of those proposed tenants sign their LOI yet?
Not yet, uh, not yet, I'm I'm sorry.
Okay.
It feels really good.
Um, Madam Chair, if I may, just before you guys jump in for board comments, the only other um, comment that I think um, we should just discuss a little bit more, and I know, um, I I actually talked to Todd from outside about it today a little bit, and not prepared to necessarily get too far into it, um, today, but really understand the circulation dynamic and how people are moving around the campus, the Sun campus was built with like one front door and kind of a a spoke-type pattern where everything was central to that Winter Garden and out, but as we see, we see people walking in around the campus, there's a lot of different companies now, and how does, how do people move throughout the campus, um, connect with um, Northwest Park, and just kind of talk a little bit more about those connections and the needed connections um, throughout that, um, and just, I don't know if any of the board members have further comments about that to prepare Todd for our next meeting. Um, they have done quite a bit with um, walking paths and other things in Northwest Park. Um, but anyway, um, that concept, and then the other cons, and the other comment I just want to make is, you know, PDs are administratively tricky, um, and just in terms of putting decisions together, so that's also another reason why um, we just need time to prepare that for you guys, um, before we suggest action, so. With that, I'll let you guys, I'll jump in, thanks.
Great, is there anyone on the board that has a question or would like to make a comment? Barbara?
I've got one, Madam Chair, Bill Gaffney here.
Okay, um, couple of questions, um, what is the building height of this building, Todd?
Hmm, Glenn, do you remember the the actual?
Well, it's um, it is fifteen feet floor-to-floor, and we have three floors plus a penthouse, so ground number is fifteen times four.
Okay, so I think then it's safe to assume that the rooftop equipment that you mentioned is pretty extensive, will not be viewable from the street?
The uh, as part of this program, as part of the the way these buildings work, we're gonna be actually building a mechanical penthouse in this, on this building. So, to which the elevator will run, and so most of, much of the equipment will be up in that up in that uh, mechanical penthouse, to the extent that there's additional equipment, we can certainly work with the board to provide screening uh, to the extent possible, you know, one of the benefits of this location is no one really can see it, right, it's up on Network Drive, unless you, unless you're up to the campus, I I particularly like, I'll just offer my own opinion, when you go to Cambridge and you see all those buildings that that are clearly science buildings and have all that equipment up there, it's kind of I understand some other people might not like it, but
You're a real estate guy, though, so.
That's right.
Okay, um, the only other thing I I had was not a question, but just a comment, because you did mention that this is going to hopefully be headquarters for at least one, possibly two large, exciting companies, and we're thrilled that they're coming to Burlington, hopefully. Um, I did want to just mention that we'd like you to be very um, respectful and careful with signage, we did have a very unpleasant surprise with um, the Millipore site that has some extremely bright, large signs that are, you can view from miles away. And um, that's not something that this board generally gets involved in, but I'm just gonna make the request now that you are respectful of what normally is done in Burlington and avoid um, very bright signs or changing light signs, things like that, um, we would not be in favor of those.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, Vice Chairman, Vice Chairman Gaffney. Vice Chairman Gaffney, did she want to comment?
Sorry, I didn't hear you there, you're a little, little light in the volume, sorry, I'll I'll be a little loud, if you guys can hear me, I'm sure Sorry, I didn't hear you there. You're a little little light in the volume. Sorry, I'll be a little loud if you guys can hear me. I'm sure you can.
Yes.
A couple of questions I had, and maybe I'll start off with what the planning director was talking about. So when I go around that with that site and I got to be honest with you, I've used that site to have my kids learn to drive their cars on it, right? But even then, on a Sunday, there there are people walking on that site and around the ring road and because there's no sidewalks there, you've got pedestrians walking particularly with a novice driver, right? And they're either against the the wooden guardrails along there, or they're jumping off the side there onto the to the sides. And even kind of during the week, if I'm coming back from from the grocery store, I'll come back that way because that's just the easiest way to go from my house. And if people do walk around that ring road. So I, you know, it's typically in my experience working at a high tech manufacturing site, we've had the same issue of people walking around the ring road and having just general traffic be a safety issue. And so what what we did was we we configured kind of the path in the sites so people would be directed from out of their building to kind of around the site. So there's kind of an interior ring road. And when we did construction with on a couple of new buildings, so maybe we can kind of look at the entire site and how that inner ring road might might be more pervasive to people walking around versus having them wanting to go out and walk on the the actual ring road itself. And if you want to come down to where I work, I'll tell you where I work and you can take a look what we did.
Okay, sure.
And I can tell you because there'd be emails being sent out and saying please slow down around the ring road, there are people walking there only because there were no sidewalks initially put in, but we put a couple of new buildings and reconfigured around campus and out to the pasture where people would want to walk. My question to the applicant on the on the building itself. Is there typically a clean room class that's required for these buildings?
Glenn, can you answer that?
Yes, a clean room class. That all depends upon the process that the tenant would propose. We do often in GMP manufacturing have clean rooms that are class 100,000 or ISO eight or class 10,000, ISO seven. Typically cleaner than that, there are specialty environments which happen in either very small fill rooms or isolated equipment within an ISO seven room. And there's
That's good to get that. So if you were to go low than let's say a class 10,000 to class 1,000 or class 100, then you have the issue of, you know, a lot of infrastructure to keep that going throughout, let's say, a large manufacturing floor. But if they're only in a class 10,000, there's not a lot of air handling that you have to do there to get the particle count down. So I think in that case, if you don't go below 10, 10 class 10,000, I think you're okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a question or comment?
Madam Chair, this is Ernie. I had one question for Attorney Buckley, probably. And for the building at the moment. So I would assume that who, when the tenant is signed up, they would then have to again go before the Board of Health with the list of chemicals and whatever. Am I right, Bob? Is that how this is going to work?
The Board of Health has jurisdiction, absolutely. They have to go before the Board of Health regardless of what the use, because you have to show compliance with their regulations so that the Board of Health is is actively involved from day one with the with the tenant. They may even have to come back to the planning board depending upon what the processes are. And but more importantly, and I think Glenn or Russ alluded to this was that they're highly regulated users with respect to the the FDA or at the federal and state level. So there's there are many layers of regulation that will be applicable here. But along with a response to your question, Mr. Cavino, they would have to go to the Board of Health and more than likely at least touch base with the planning board.
Thank you. That's that's very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone out in the audience that would like to have that has a comment or question?
Madam Chair, this is Brady. I'm not seeing any one.
Thank you. Barbara, you're on mute, but I will accept your motion.
Before the can I make a comment before the motion is made?
Of course.
With respect to Mr. Gaffney's comment, I would like to point out that that's one of the reasons why we the internal pedestrian circulation, one of the reasons why we wanted to address the site modifications to adjacent sites was to essentially control the pedestrian access and actually move them internal to our remedy load area as well as direct them to the North Avenue connection to get them down to North Avenue and Third Avenue where many of the other amenities are. And on the outer ring road about, I believe it's about five years ago, Todd, we actually installed or you installed speed tables to make sure that vehicles would be controlled in the speed. But we'll be prepared to show those interconnections of what the thought processes were behind those to address how we're going to direct the the employees that are resident at the site.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the June 17, 2021 Planning Board meeting.
Second.
Madam Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Larue.
Yes. Thanks. Have a great evening.
Me as well, Joe.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Joe.
Madam Chair, can I just ask, whoops, I think he's gone, Todd. I was just thinking, there's there's a couple of us on the board. Paul Raymond right now, maybe maybe Joe was also that have actually toured the what are you about, but I don't think the rest of my fellow members might know. So if the occasion ever arose to to take us all through through some buildings, especially the common areas that were designated as extreme common areas, it might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, no, I'd be happy to do that anytime that works for the board.
That's a great idea. Thank you, Ernie. Thank you, Todd.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items 7W through 7AA together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Madam Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Impena.
Yes.
Member Larue.
Yes. Item 7W is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.2.6.9 fast order food establishments establishments of the zoning by law provisions 59 through 63 Middlesex Turnpike, Noria Energy is the applicant. Item X is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.4.1.1 discharges from manmade structures into the wetlands of the zoning by law provisions 59 through 63 Middlesex Turnpike, Noria Energy is the applicant. Item Y is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 6.1.1 nonconforming uses of the zoning by law provisions 59 through 63 Middlesex Turnpike, Noria Energy is the applicant. Item Z is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 6.1.2 nonconforming structures and premises of the zoning by law provisions 59 through 63 Middlesex Turnpike, Noria Energy is the applicant. Item AA is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan 59 through 63 Middlesex Turnpike, Noria Energy is the applicant. It looks like we wouldn't have any, we don't have any new departmental reports, Brady, is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Who's here on behalf of the applicant? Sir, you're on mute. I can see you, I just can't hear you.
Is that better? Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Apologies for that. Madam Chair, members of the board and staff, for the record, I'm Bill Croye, representing Noria Energy this evening at the new public hearing. And we have a full crew here. I'll let them introduce themselves when the questions come up for them. I'd just like to spend a couple of minutes reviewing where we were last time and addressing some of the issues that we're hoping to address in detail tonight based on the comments we got from the board and the input from staff and departments as well. So first, I would just like to say that even with the most optimistic kind of projections about transitioning to electric vehicles, I think we're going to have fueling stations around with us for a few more years at least. So in that context, we think it's probably good planning to make sure that these facilities are efficient and safe and sanitary and, you know, as ecologically aware as they can be. So that's what we're trying to propose and construct here. Another one of the issues we had last time was about the curbless design of the site. And I would just want to respectfully suggest that that design is very accessible and safe for all kinds of pedestrians. Not just, you know, people with permanent disabilities or challenges, but anyone that has sort of a temporary problem, maybe on crutches or I'm getting older, I know it's harder to go up and down even stairs in my house sometimes. So I would appreciate that myself. And I think that can be done without compromising safety, given the Ballard design layout that you'll see, you've seen and you'll see more in the rendering set. We're sort of illustrated better. And I was able to send Brady a photograph of a site actually under construction in Wareham, Mass. I think that might be helpful for staff and the board to see that later as well. And the last thing I think we had was some comments and a request to see some elevations and renderings of the site, and those are going to be presented as well in a while. And more detailed project architect John is here, I see him. I'm just going to say quickly that the design clearly reflects Noria's company identity and their branding strategy. And it was also meant to be contextual. So we took sort of some cues from what more recent contemporary buildings were approved in this quarter and tried to keep that theme going as well. So I think those were the major questions last time, or again, we'll address those in more detail. Is there any one particular place you'd like to start, Madam Chair? Or is that order fine with you?
I'm muted, I'm Brenda.
It's my favorite part of every virtual meeting. Is there anything else that you would like them to address or that that you'd like to comment on? I think that he covered everything or at least the majority of our concerns. And of course, we can bring additional ones up as as they proceed.
If you're asking me that question, yeah, I think I think Attorney Poyet did a good job outlining it. The the more specifics that I I would just want to make sure we highlight when you're going through it is the landscaping and vegetation in and around the site. And there was a question by one member at the last meeting that was kind of noting there you do have to make a section six finding that the that the new site is not substantially more detrimental than the previous or the use as proposed than the existing use. And there was a question about the number of pumps that were proposed. So I just want to make sure we continue as a whole on that topic. And oh, the just to let you guys know, we're just thinking about kind of strategically how to break break out the special permits. The fast order food use inside the restaurant, what you'll probably see is you'll see a whole bundle of special permits for all of the gasoline related stuff, and then we'll probably have that one separate. So in in such potential situation where in the future, they may want a different user of that fast order food that is just easier to modify later. But that's that's not really important for this discussion, just kind of letting you know how we're thinking about it. Usually you see kind of a bundle for everything. So with that, yeah, I'm interested to see the additional information that the applicant has to present.
Great, thank you.
Very good. It's Bill again. And I think, thanks, Kristen. I think maybe then the because it encompasses all those elements that everyone was just mentioning that they're concerned about or want more information regarding. I think probably the best thing would be go to the renderings. And John, and we can integrate the discussion with some of those other points that Kristen raised. And the landscaping, Luke DiStefano from Bowler's here as well. Oh, you're going to do this. Okay. I thought I thought we're going to pull up the architecturals, but we could we can start here.
I could pull up the architecturals, Bill, if that's what you want.
You are, yeah. I thought I thought that might be a good way to just see everything as an integrated proposal. And have John go through the design and architectural piece of it. And then you can maybe hit the landscaping plan in more detail, maybe point out those sheets that were in the plan set as well to answer those questions. I'm going to give it to John if that's okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Bill. This is, my name is John Selly. I'm with Phase Zero Design, we're the architects for the convenience store on the project site. So our client, Noria Energy, is expanding across Massachusetts and really across New England in general. And and part of their growth strategy has really been to increase their brand awareness and brand recognition. And and part of that focus on brand recognition has been to develop an architectural style for their convenience stores that really reflects their concept for the convenience store. And really what they're trying to do is to create a fresh, modern contemporary, light-filled convenience store concept. So whenever we we help these guys with a site and you'll see we've worked with them in Wareham, Mass. and other locations. We always first take a look at the the context, the surroundings of the site that we're working in to make sure that the design of the building is contextual, that it fits in with the surroundings. And in this case, we think it does as we take a look at the the project site here, which you can see outlined in in red in the aerial view along Middlesex Turnpike here, just south of the I-95 128 corridor. It's really a highly commercialized strip here. We see a lot of retail, corporate office, things of that nature along this the strip of roadway. And as we look at our immediate neighbors, we see to the north, the Dunkin' Donuts, to the south, the McDonald's. A little bit further up the the street on the other side, we have the East Boston Savings Bank, the Midas and other commercial buildings around. And when we take a look at the architecture of those other buildings, we see that they're doing something very similar to Noria's approach, which is using the architecture of these buildings in a contemporary way to really reflect the the brand strategy of the company. So if you could advance to the next slide, we'll we'll jump in to give you a sense of the convenience store building, and then we'll go out to the exterior renderings to take a look. So the floor plan here, pretty straightforward with the convenience store with the the grab and go Amato's deli operation within it. We have two entrances, primary entrance on the bottom of the page here, which is the west side of the site from parking directly into the store, and then a secondary entrance on the left hand side here, which is directly out to the fueling operations. We have the cashier counter immediately next to that entry with a very good visual access out to the fueling area, but also across the the rest of the convenience store. On the bottom left hand corner here, we have a beverage counter for the Cafe Noria coffee offerings. And then the general sales floor retail area of the convenience store, you see the the retail shelving and the the walk-in coolers on the backside of the the store here. And then over on the right side is where you see the counter, the grab and go counter for the Amato's deli operation. And then a bit of seating to the just to the left of that counter. I have about 12 seats there for folks who want to grab a quick bite to eat there in the in the store before they head back out onto the road. And then farther to the right there, we have the restrooms serving guests of the store and the back of house space for the the deli operations. So again, pretty straightforward convenience store layout. Maybe we'll go to the next slide here. Give you a quick overview of the building design. So again, in trying to reflect this fresh contemporary approach to the convenience store, the design of the building, which you see beyond the shell canopy there, is a contemporary approach, but using architectural elements and materials to help articulate and help give you some relief to the facades of the building. So you can see the dark-colored material highlights that main entry that we saw in the sort of center of the store. And then the branded green Noria canopy that connects from that main entry around the corner to the secondary entry on the fueling side of the building. You see the large glass openings, which again activates the facade, but also brings that large amount of natural light into the interior of the store, making it a bright, open space. Go to the next slide, please. And another architectural highlight of the building is the use of really high-quality, durable, naturalistic exterior cladding materials. So the main body of the store that you see in the tan beige color is a cementitious cladding panel that has a stone, naturalistic stone appearance to it. And then the darker brown-colored material over the entry is again a cementitious cladding panel, but that in a wood look, so it replicates a wood-planked style on that portion of the building. And again, you see the Noria green canopy, the accents of the dark bronze metal elements in the storefront framing and the lubers over the storefront, also tying that dark brown color into the ballards that I know were subject of discussion on the previous meeting, which helped demarcate that pedestrian zone along the front of the store and the side of the store. So that's sort of a sort of quick overview here of the both layout of the building, but also the exterior design ideas behind it. Happy to field any questions that you all may have about the design of the building.
Hi, it's Bill. If it's okay, maybe I'll have Luke DiStefano just give a little more detail on the landscaping. I know those questions from last time. And now that you've seen the rendering, maybe that just planting plan makes a little bit more sense and how it will visually impact the site and improve the site. So Luke, go ahead.
We can't hear you.
How's that?
Great.
Okay, I apologize. Technology doesn't work 99% of the time. But so for the record, Luke DiStefano, an associate with Baller Engineering. And as Bill mentioned, what I'd like to do is just quickly walk through really the landscaping on the southern side of the property. And as we discussed at the last meeting, and I believe it's a DCM meeting, we do show a, what I would consider a significant increase in green space on this property in landscaping along the Middlesex Turnpike and then the northern corner of the property that is more for aesthetics than anything else, just to provide a little bit of greenery and to break up some of the impervious cover areas that we have on the property. However, during discussions with the Conservation Commission, we were asked to look at the species and the plantings along the southern side of the property adjacent to Vine Brook. So we took that back, spoke with our landscape architects, and they have come up with a comprehensive plan that basically consists of non-cultivar native species that are designed to thrive on edge of woods adjacent to wetlands. These are really designed to be low-maintenance species such as bayberry, blueberry, summer sweet, and then some blue stem ornamental grasses as well. Again, to really not only provide some aesthetic aspects to the southern side, but to really enhance and somewhat increase that buffer along the southern edge of the property. And that, in a nutshell, is really the impetus behind the landscape design. And again, I'm certainly happy to answer any additional questions relative to that.
Thank you.
Could you talk about the landscaping along the front on the street edge specifically? The rendering seemed to show kind of small shrubs. Just kind of talk through that a little bit.
Yeah, and I can call up the landscape plan to get the exact species. But again, this is low-level plantings, evergreen and some flowering plants to provide again some aesthetics along the frontage. But obviously, we can't go too crazy because we want to maintain visibility into and out of the property. So these are, as I mentioned, some low-level plantings that typically won't get above 30 inches so that you have that clear line of sight into and out of the site for the vehicles entering and exiting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to open this up to the board. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments that they would like to address the applicant?
Madam Chair, I do. Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Yes. When I said the title Noria Energy, when I think energy, I think, you know, electric, gas. And this to me, what we're describing right now is like a glorified 7-Eleven. So I'm having trouble looking at this as an energy project, if you will. I guess is the energy, the food? And I have some questions about the intensive use on the site. How much is this going to increase the amount of traffic? Because that's a tough spot now. When you come under 95, you have to be paying attention because there's Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, which is, you know, major generator of traffic. And to, this to me, and I think Barbara mentioned it the last time around, that this, I don't know, I'm not sure if this is a non-conforming site as it is now, but I certainly wouldn't want to increase the nonconformity. I noticed on all the traffic studies they did, it was kind of, I don't want to say mealy-mouthed, but it said, well, yes, there's going to be an increase in traffic, but the levels of traffic there are such that the increase in traffic created by this project will not make the traffic situation that much worse, if you will. So I, you know, I just, and the other thing to look at, what I'm looking at now on my Bcat, that left side, you know, there's, you know, a little, little strip of green over there. You know, you might as well not even bother. That looks so incandescent to me. The other thing is, how many pumps are there now on that gas station? I thought it was four. And this rendering indicates there's going to be two more pumps than is on the site now. Is that correct or not correct? And just to answer those to start with, because I'm frankly very uneasy about this. And so I don't think in my mind, this is going to be a project that's just going to, you know, go flying through and all the approvals come down at the next meeting. Thank you.
And if I may, Madam Chair, to answer the question relative to number of pumps, there are four existing today and six proposed under the post-development condition.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. This is Bill. I know Mr. Raymond didn't have the benefit of being at the last hearing to hear the traffic report. So I think if it's okay, that makes sense to help him understand the report a little bit better. Maybe Kirsten, if you're here, you can maybe address some of Mr. Raymond's questions and concerns in a little bit more detail.
By the way, I did spend about three hours plus viewing the last meeting. So I'm very aware. There were no distractions. I was there by myself. The people at the library were helpful and got me set up. And these were questions that were coming to me as I was looking at this. So I'm pretty much aware of the site and what you're proposing. And as I said, I'm uncomfortable with it. And I don't know if the other board members have any questions about it or not. It won't be the first time that, you know, I've been out there by myself and concerned about a site, which I think, to me, it's almost an increased intensity of use of a non-conforming site.
Madam? Sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I look forward to any of the other board members, if they have any of those questions or not.
Thank you, Member Clerk Raymond. Is there anyone else on the board that would like to, like a discussion about the traffic count? Would we like Kristen to go through that again, or was there something else that somebody else would like to address?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of quick questions and then something I'd like to say as well.
Of course.
My questions are really quick. For the architect, the green canopy, that's the green line that's part of the canopy on the convenience store, is that green paint or is that a light?
That's a green painted aluminum canopy.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was hoping you were going to say. And then the statement I wanted to make is just that I agree with Paul. I have this concern. I do not feel comfortable increasing a non-conforming use. It will increase traffic, even if it doesn't increase traffic tremendously, it will be an increase in traffic. But mostly, I'm just very uncomfortable increasing a non-conforming use. So I am, at this point, not in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Madam Chair?
Of course.
It's Joe. Just a quick comment that I, I just wanted to also reiterate some of the thoughts that the fellow members have had. Paul makes an extremely good point, and I agree with him 100%. I think we're increasing the number of pumps and it's just not, it's not a good area down there for traffic and the traffic flow and everything else. And I think it's just going to invite additional traffic down there to increase the currently non-conforming use. So I have a lot of concerns with it.
Thank you. Vice Chair, Kathy.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I would, I think, Member Raymond brought up a couple of things that I hadn't quite thought about. One was that north side landscaping, you know, where there's a grass strip there. Is that what the dunks, is that ready on the north side there? That little strip of grass? And then if you look at the front side, I know the applicant discussed those mini shrubs. I know we've talked about this in the past, that we really should kind of up our game on the landscaping of these sites. And, you know, you put the two-foot shrubs there, it's kind of a joke, you know, don't even bother doing it, right? Just if you look at the overall, the convenience store, you know, I looked at, that looks very stock. And I don't know if it's because the ballards are there and you don't have anything to break up where the parking spaces come to the storefront. It looks like, you know, there isn't a walkway there. But if you had kind of that differentiation with the granite curbing versus the ballards, it differentiates that more, breaks it up a little bit. Because again, the site looks very, very stock, particularly with the rectangle building there, it doesn't really help things out. I thought the Dunkin's was done up a little better. But I think just from the applicant's standpoint, when he said, you look around the other buildings to gauge where you should put there, I would not recommend doing that. What you want to do is to look at kind of best-in-class buildings that are fairly new there. Maybe the banks are a good example of that with increased landscaping. But, you know, to look at the Music Center and look at the older buildings around there and to fit that in, I would say that's probably reverse logic of what you really want to do to kind of up your game on this particular site. Yeah, so frontage there and just even around the building for some landscaping. Again, it's very, very stark. You really want to break that up with landscaping. You want to kind of think, you know, as I travel around the country, you really, the landscaping is really offsets you to up your game, to really think of you being a premier site. Again, I would agree with the other members with regard to the increased non-conforming use. If you look at the site map, which we saw earlier, and you look to the right where the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond is, in the non-COVID time, which we're getting back to, they stationed, they stationed a traffic policeman there just because of the heavy traffic that's here. So there's no light there. But just because of that heavy traffic, people can't get in and out of that site, which is right next door to where you are. So if we're increasing traffic, and I am going to take a little bit more time to take a look at that traffic study in more detail. But you're right next to that where that heavy traffic is, and that Middlesex Turnpike just gets completely jammed up. So if you're trying to take a left into there where it's jammed up on the right, you just can't do it. Traffic stopped. You know, do we think about having police duty on the weekends or something when they have the police duty at the next one down, just to get people in and out of your site coming down off the highway? And this, the other thing we talked about last time was having the, on the pumps themselves, with the video and the music and the advertisements on the pump. I think, you know, again, depending on the interpretation, the building aspect, my interpretation of that is, is that is actually, it's advertising. I know the ones downtown do have that, and as soon as you plug your card in and you get your gas, then it gets into this gas station TV, GSTV. And it's not, it's not news, it's not weather, it's not information, it's advertisement. Just the one that I went to recently, they were advertising Wendy's, and I think it was some sort of phone company that they were advertising. So it's not, you know, and it's blaring at you when you get there from a nuisance standpoint. So I would say if this goes forward, you know, in its current state or a modified state, I think if there's an opportunity to have the pumps available without the video, the audio, and the advertisements come on, that supplements into that, I think that would be the way to go on that one. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So anyone else that would like to present a comment or a question? Okay.
Madam Chair? Sure. Madam Chair?
Sure.
This is Ernie, Madam Chair. And I'm thinking, looking at this compared to what's there now, it maybe is two more pumps. Does that actually mean more people gassing up there? I guess it could, because people will probably drive by if they see all the pumps are occupied rather than wait in line. I'm not sure how much that would increase what's there now. This building, I think, would be a more intensive use than the DeAngelo's that is there even when the DeAngelo's was operating. So it would be a more intense use. Aesthetically, I would like to see more landscaping, too. Maybe some in front of the store itself makes sense. But given a choice between what's there now and this, if this can be upgraded, I think I could be persuaded to say this is better looking than what's there now and would, even though we don't have design review, and be influenced to possibly vote for it with some improvement, as some of my fellow members have suggested. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie.
Madam Chair, may I?
Of course.
Thank you all for your comments. Very helpful. Just picking up on a couple of those and Mr. Cavino's comments. So I think it would be helpful to have Kirsten.
And I think it would be helpful to have Kirsten comment on this, and I'll bring her in a minute if it's okay. So on the on the uses, just to clarify and maybe remind folks, so there is a convenience store there now, and there's a restaurant in the adjacent site that has been closed for for many years. So within the new proposed building, those uses would be recreated, and it's about 700 square feet more of floor space. And I think Mr. Mr. Covino's point is a is a good one. So the addition, the addition of the two pumps really was focused on, again, Kirsten can reinforce this, was to improve the circulation on and off the site. The pumps aren't necessarily the drivers of the additional trips, and again, they're pretty modest in number, and Kirsten can go through those again. So that was really the point of that, that the pumps, again, aren't really the driver. So while in number there are more, it doesn't really add up, I don't think, based on the data we have. We're really increasing the expanding the nonconforming use. I mean, I would have to look at that as sort of based on the data. And again, the the traffic counts, I don't think warrant that. It could be just natural growth, the D'Angelo's factor has to be considered as a closed store. And I understand there is traffic along along the corridor. And we tried to address that, and I think Ron did a good job addressing this site, how this site works in that context. So I would just hope that the members could keep some of those points. And again, to one of Mr. Covino's points is, you know, all development project, redevelopment projects require upgrades, whether it's, you know, stormwater, open space, landscaping, you know, I think we have hit those checkpoints. This site has additional additional layers of regulatory requirements because of the riverfront. And I think Luke did a good job describing that. It's also a downgrade location. So the Board of Health addressed that, but additional expenses imposed on the redevelopment because of that status. So, you know, in order to make all the improvements, I, you know, there is generally required that we create a little bit more activity on the site to finance and fund the improvements, significant improvements, I would say, on this site. Without, so that was the balance we tried to strike, not being substantially more detrimental than the existing condition. And I would say overall that this would be an improvement in existing condition. For many, for many of the reasons people already spoke to, I just wanted to remind listeners of that. But we do hear your comments on the landscaping and some of the design issues. But I'd like to hand it off to Kirsten to really sort of focus in on the drivers of the additional trips and and why the pumps function in a positive manner, even though there are two more. Apparently, it looks like a major increase in intensity, but it really doesn't function that way. So, thank you, and I'll hand it off to Kirsten.
Yeah, thank you. Again, Kirsten Braun, traffic engineer with Ron Mueller Associates. So I just would like to piggyback on some of the things that Bill had mentioned, as well as addressing some of the comments that the board had. As Bill had mentioned, this this is essentially two sites with the D'Angelo's on the southern portion of the site and the existing Shell gas station to the northern side. I would like to point out that although this D'Angelo's has been vacant, I think since 2018, there is availability for it to be reoccupied by another fast food use at any time. So what we really wanted to look at was the increase in traffic associated with this development, with the slightly increased convenience store size and those additional pumps that we've talked about. So when we looked at all that information, given the D'Angelo's could be reoccupied and that traffic, there could be traffic in the future associated with a fast food shop there, given this project doesn't go through, we did find that the additional trips that we could be, we could expect would be somewhere between five and 50 trips, depending on the peak hour, five additional trips on a Saturday, and that's primarily due to the fact that the D'Angelo's generates or would generate a fast food shop, a good amount of traffic during the Saturday midday peak hour. I would like to highlight, though, that, you know, I I get the board's concerns with with the fact that there is a lot of traffic on Middlesex Turnpike. But that isn't very different than a lot of other locations on Middlesex Turnpike. In fact, we actually have a lot of features to this site that actually lend lend some benefits here to the site, given the fact that there's a lot of traffic. And one thing I'd like to highlight specifically is that left turn lane on Middlesex Turnpike that really leads into the two driveways that we have. I'd like to also remind that the northern driveway is an exit only. So any traffic that would be entering the site and may be waiting to turn left and waiting for a gap in traffic would be out of the traffic stream on Middlesex Turnpike. So there wouldn't be any impacts there. Anybody waiting to queue would wait somewhere in that left turn lane. As part of our analysis too, I just also would like to highlight that the analysis doesn't take into account the signals just north and south of of the site. So there will be frequent gaps in traffic to allow those left turning vehicles into the site. Another assumption we made in our traffic study was that most of the traffic would be coming from the north, primarily because of the, we followed the same traffic patterns at the existing gas station experiences today. And also, just a reminder, we've got 95 just to the north there, and a lot of traffic destined to the site would probably be coming off 95, driving down, making that left turn into the site, and then taking a right turn out of the site and getting back onto 95. I it was mentioned in the traffic study that there would be some delays primarily felt from left turning vehicles out of the site. As I mentioned, we only had about 25% of traffic going to destined to the south. And for right turning vehicles, that sort of delay won't be felt. There will be gaps, like I said, with those traffic signals, both north and south of the site. And also, another benefit we have is we have three curb cuts here into and at, well, two two curb cuts into the site and three curb cuts out of the site. So if there is anybody waiting to left, it's sort of a self fulfilling prophecy, you know, people will will exit from whichever driveway there's, there isn't necessarily a queue app. So I do understand the concerns. Middlesex Turnpike is a busy, is a busy road. But this this site specifically does have a lot of benefits to adhere to that and given that left turn lane into the site. And the fact that most of this traffic will either be diverted trips from 95 or about 76% of traffic is expected to just be passed by traffic, meaning that it won't be new traffic to the adjacent roadway. People will be on their way to their primary destination and will just swing through for gas or to or to go into the convenience store on their way to that destination. So those trips are essentially all already outside on the on Middlesex Turnpike. I'm hope, I hope that I got, I tried to jot down everyone's comments as I went along here. But if anyone has anything else more specific, I can answer those questions.
Thank you. Barbara, do you still have your hand up from last time, or would you like to speak?
Yes, but it wasn't a question, it was just like a thing I forgot to mention that if this moves forward on the site plan, I want to make sure, because I can't really see, it's so small, make sure that the EV charging stations are marked on the site plan. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the board? Yeah, I can kind of mirror some of the same concerns. My biggest concern, I have to say, those those bollards, I just, I can't get behind that. I would rather see granite curbing. You know, to mirror Vice Chair Gaffney's point about comparing this building to some of the older buildings on Middlesex Turnpike, I think it's a poor comparison. There's, there's nothing wrong with being the best dressed person in the room. So we maybe take that to heart when we're looking at the design of this building. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment or question this matter?
Madam Chair, this is Brady. I'm not seeing anyone at this time.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of June 17, 2021.
Second, Bill.
Chairman Rappaport.
Thank you. Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteban.
Yes.
Member Pumba.
Yes.
Member Warru.
Yes.
Thank you, folks. Thank you to the applicants. I appreciate your time. Have a good evening, and we look forward to seeing you on the 17th.
Thank you.
Very good, thanks.
Okay, next up, we have meeting minutes. Has anyone, has everyone had an opportunity to read the meeting minutes of May 6?
I have not, Madam Chair. This is Bill. I haven't had a chance to read either minutes.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't either, Joe.
Okay, so we'll table those for for next meeting?
Yeah.
Other matters for discussion purposes, last meeting, we talked about renaming the IH, IH district. Do we have any thoughts on what we would like to name it?
So I I put this on here, I just, I know we don't have to decide this right now. But these items were kind of things I just wanted to bring up because warrant submissions are due at the end of the month. And just confirm that renaming the IH district was something you guys wanted to submit, which we will. I'm not exactly sure when it'll be yet. We'll certainly send an email out with suggestions. But certainly put a placeholder in for that for September. The other provision, Chapter 43D. If you guys recall in 2008, we as a town accepted Chapter 43D, it's the expedited permitting statute that committed, we committed to processing permits within 180 days, which is six months, which we do anyway. We have adopted that section, we've created regulations for it. And at the time, we rezoned a handful of sites into the 43D district, pretty much just Northwest Park, part of Network Drive, because those were, that's what, that's the PD we had just done. And anyway, just, I've been talking with Melissa Tentakalas about adding additional sites, especially sites that we want to encourage redevelopment, like potentially the cinema and the Extended Stay Hotel area. So anyway, I'm not sure if she's, if who's gonna bring it forward, but just wanted to put it on the radar in terms of what we're kind of thinking about. It really does doesn't do much, but it puts some of these properties on that 43D list with the state, so people looking for properties. So we can talk more about it. Again, I just wanted to bring it up for we're kind of talking about it among economic development and myself, so just wanted to put it on the radar there. The last piece, which I actually first wanted, because as Brian noted, Brenda noted at the beginning, let me say before number three, was that we're trying to, the chairman recommended that we do in kind of another strategy, strategy session to kind of look at priorities and and the board, which I think we're going to try to do in late June, potentially July, the town hall opens July 14, so things get a little bit easier to accommodate people in the building. For the most part, people have moved out of kind of the public spaces and rooms, but that's still kind of happening. So I don't know, Brenda, if you want to jump in and talk about potential potential things you're thinking about in terms of timing of something like that. And then, anyway, yeah, let's do that first, and then I'll jump in.
So, yes, you know, I think it's important for all of us to get together, you know, see see everyone's faces if they're comfortable doing so. Otherwise, you know, of course, we can accommodate, you know, kind of a virtual meeting for those who aren't. But to discuss kind of our intentions and what we would like to accomplish over the next year. You know, master plan is definitely on that list. And, you know, I want to hear feedback from you folks about things that, you know, you're passionate about, or you think that, you know, we really need to bring to fruition over the next year. So if town offices are opening the 14th, we do have a meeting on the 17th. I would propose that we conduct a meeting at 6:30 on the 24th. Barbara, is that when you said you were going away?
Yeah. Sorry, I am gone. For scheduling purposes, I'm gone from the 19th to the 26th.
Okay.
Sorry.
Then, no, no, that's okay. So then maybe we push it to July 8th, because do we, we do have a meeting on the 1st? We do not have a meeting on the 1st. Our next meeting is July 8th after that?
July 15th, Madam Chair.
Okay. So would folks be comfortable with meeting on the 8th? Or are people away that week?
I'm away that week. I mean, I don't.
I'm I'm away that week as well.
Okay. So then we could bring that to July 22nd? Works for me. Anyone? Okay, July 22nd, 6:30. We will have a strategy meeting Location TBD.
Yeah.
And then the next item of discussion, a couple of members had had talked about, you know, when somebody emails the Planning Board email, if we could have a direct forwarding of that correspondence to the Planning Board members, rather than having them filtered through staff. Is anyone opposed to that, you know, and bearing in mind that, you know, we wouldn't have, our personal emails wouldn't be provided to whoever's sending that email. It's more just for visibility, just to kind of understand what's going on in the weeds. Do I have any commentary for or against that? Sure. You're on mute. Bill, you're on mute. You're still on mute.
Sorry, yeah, I am, I would like to continue with staff. You know, kind of getting those emails in, you know, you probably get a lot of emails, and, you know, the ones that you you see fit, certainly maybe from the chair to say, send this to the rest of the to the group is, I've been comfortable with that all along. I don't need to see every email that comes into the Planning Board, but to this planning staff, but I'm confident the staff can, and the chair can decide which ones to go to the rest of the members. There's just one vote on that one.
Sure. You know, I I don't know. I feel like if if somebody wants in, then we can have those folks in, and if somebody wants to opt out, such as yourself, I think we can do that too. What's other folks, what's your thoughts?
Personally, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it either.
Don't ever, I don't either.
Okay. Joe?
Can I just ask a quick question on clarifying what you're looking for? So just in terms of trying to figure it out, because so if if someone is looking to contact the Planning Board to to speak with you, like we're done, but just, I want to send somebody to the Planning Board. So it'd be like planningboard@berlinson.org, and it would just go to everyone. Is that what you're thinking about? Yes. So I think one of the the hiccups that we might run into, and I can continue talking with IT, they've they've been very busy because they're trying to get our meeting rooms back in order, so. But just what we may need to have is that members might need to have a berlinson.org email address to then be able to bundle that to your, to bundle that group. I'm not positive yet. I know when I was thinking about it after Brenda, we talked today, I know in the past that it had been the case, and when we created the planning@berlinson.org, that go to all four of us in the office, just to make sure we all know what's going on. We all had to have it under that@berlinson.org. So we can continue to look at that and then maybe put it as a topic on the 20th, on the July 22nd discussion, and we can go from there to see if people are comfortable and yeah, again, I think, you know, Brenda, you you brought it up, it's a good question, and I I guess I feel like we need to get a little bit more information, but put it on the radar for folks if they're interested.
Great, thank you. Do we have any correspondence? Reports from council. Subcommittee reports. Unfinished business. New business. It's 9:12, folks. May I have a motion?
This is Brenda. Madam Chair, I actually have a question.
Yes.
So with the town hall-
So with the town hall opening up on, what, June 14th, what's the plan for us going forward? Are we still going to stay remote or what, what are we going to do?
So there's, uh, so next week, uh, the town manager is going to be holding some tutorials for kind of hybrid of what that looks like. So for folks that want to come into the office or come into, uh, town hall, they can conduct a meeting in town hall. Um, for those who don't feel comfortable and still want to conduct meetings from home, you know, I think that there's still that opportunity. Uh, I think also, you know, where it offers a flexibility for uh, applicants to meet virtually and, and attend meetings more, you know, with ease. Uh, I think this, this might be our new way of life, but I think we'll learn more next week. So, um, if there's any tutorial sessions um, or things that would be of interest, we'll make sure that that's, uh, sent out to the board.
So as of now, the 17th is the same route?
Right now, um, the, the 17th is, is, um, virtual, only for the fact that until next week, we just don't know if everything's back to working. Um, just meaning if you're in the main hearing, is everything worked? Is all the sound work? Is B candles? Like over COVID, over the last, um, year and a half, there's been a whole bunch of different people in the rooms. They've, like, it's, it's been dismantled as a meeting room and kind of used as meetings, as offices. Um, so they're real, literally just underway getting all that put back together. Um, uh, there's also a lot of legislation that, uh, Baker administrations has filed. Um, the legislature is trying to figure out what to do. Um, it's expected that they're going to extend virtual meetings, at least for a little while, probably through the summer, um, in terms of being allowed under open meeting. Um, I don't know what's going to happen in the final, um, aspect, but I guess short answer is we'll know more next week if we can do the meeting, um, in June, um, in person. Um, I would expect for sure by the July meeting that we, everyone would be prepared. So I'm just not sure if the preparations are there to, yet. Um, but they're getting there.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Madam Chair, one quick thing. There was a, if I may?
Of course.
Uh, there was a, there was a, I guess there was a meeting today at 2 o'clock on the town center. Did I get that date right? But I wasn't able to make that meeting. Did anybody attend it?
I wasn't able to attend it.
Able to.
Okay.
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay.
Um,
anything interesting there, Ernie?
It was basically a, cause uh, a, a consultant hired by or through, uh, Melissa Tentakalas's office, I believe, Economic Development, uh, did some surveys of some of the merchants and business owners in the town center to see what they were concerned about and what they needed and whatever. It, it basically, um, most of the issues that you've heard raised before, uh, about, uh, well, signage was one of the big things. I think there were only, uh, there was a small number of respondents and they thought that might've been because they already did a place, uh, place finding, I, I think they called it survey, uh, with the, with the town, uh, businesses down there. And they had, uh, quite a few people responded. This one was a smaller number. I don't recall the exact number, but it wasn't, definitely wasn't over 50. Um, and, and one of the big things was they were concerned about signs. It's a difficult and confusing process and the signs, uh, to get signs approved. Grant money available to bring in specialized consultants, depending on what the issues are. Uh, the consultant talked about, uh, walkability within the town center, uh, um, what else? Possibly using some areas as, uh, public gathering spaces, obviously have with the, with the approval of the property owners down there. Uh, but it, it was more a generalized conversation. There is a, uh, the, the meeting was recorded and I'm sure that, uh, it's going to be available either on the economic development website, or I don't know if the, if it's, if the planning, uh, I imagine planning should be able to get it and put it on our site too. It was about an hour long. And, uh, I think that's all I recall about it really.
Madam Chair. Uh, Madam Chair, if I may, uh, Bill, if you're interested, or Vice Chair Gaffney, um, I can reach out to Melissa T tomorrow, um, and ask her for the link.
Yeah, if you could send that to all of us, Brady, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ernie. Thanks for attending. I, I just couldn't make it today.
No problem. Sorry, I didn't have more. Yep.
Yeah, good.
It was pretty well, actually, uh, as far as, uh, elected appointed officials, it was pretty well attended. There were attended a couple of people from Ways and Means at Weiner, you know, uh, uh, people, people, uh, you know, people like that, that, your normal, normal group of people. Put that way. Thanks.
Great.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino. Member Esteban.
Yes.
Member Pumba.
Yes.
Member Larue.
Yes.
Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Night, folks. Thanks so much. Bye bye. Night.